I'd like to call the May 5, 2015, regular City Council meeting of the Federal -- City of Federal Way. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Dick Mayor, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of fun to say. All right. So, the first thing, the very first thing we have out of the box is promotional, excuse me, promotional ceremony and oath of office for Deputy Chief Steve Neal.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of the council. Today's a very special day as we take a moment to publicly recognize and celebrate the promotion of Commander Steve Neal to the rank of Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Neal has been with the Federal Way Police Department for almost nineteen years and has more than twenty-five years of law enforcement experience. With this promotion, Steve will have division responsibility and will oversee the Support Service Division within the police department. Steve is a proven leader and a person of exceptional character integrity and has demonstrated his commitment to community service and public safety throughout his career. Steve began his law enforcement career in Plavlo County, Colorado. In 1996, he joined the Federal Way Police Department as a founding member. Steve worked in patrol until he was promoted to Lieutenant in 1999. He was promoted to the rank of Commander in 2001. Steve has spent the last fourteen years in command-level position and has worked every section of the police department. He was the acting deputy chief from May 2009 till May of 2010. Steve graduated summa cum laude from Kaplan University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Steve is a graduate of the FBI National Academy Session 224 and is an active member of the National Academy Associates. He was one of only four hundred six bomb squad commanders in the country and he held a top-secret clearance related to that position. Steve is an executive level certified through the Washington Criminal Justice Training Commission. He's also a trainer in the Leadership for Police Organizations program. During his tenure with the Federal Way Police Department, Steve received the Meritorious Service Medal and the Certificate of Merit. I would also like to note that Steve is near fluent in Spanish. Steve spent many years in Mexico as a child when his father was signed to work there. Steve is married to his wife Terry and their son Travis will graduate from high school this year and will start college education at the University of Washington in the fall. We're very excited for Steve. Please join me in congratulating Deputy Chief Steve Neal for the significant career achievement.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Stephen Neal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of Deputy Chief.
Perform the duties of Deputy Chief.
And in for the City of Federal Way.
And in for the City of Federal Way.
County of King.
County of King.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
And such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Should we, do you want to come down or you want, let us come on down, please?
I was going to have Steve say a few. Steve?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, Steve. You've met my wife Terry and I'm very pleased to have her and my son Travis with me here tonight. And I'd also like to recognize all of my police family and friends that are here tonight. I appreciate that very much. And I'm very honored to have this opportunity to, in this new role as the Deputy Chief for the Federal Way Police Department and to serve not only the men and women of the Federal Way Police Department but also the citizens, businesses, and organizations of the City of Federal Way as we all work towards achieving Chief Wong's mantra of earning the public's trust. Thank you. All right. Excuse, excuse me, help us organize. great pictures from this past week or two weeks. I just couldn't settle on one, so we've got rotating. This picture is something we're going to be talking about, which came from the Let's Paint Federal Way. We've got some of the volunteers that were here, but that's going to be part of my report here in a few minutes. But we're rotating pictures just because we've had some great things happen. Oh, thank you. I should say that we also have one member of the City Council that's present but not, not in full body. He is here electronically by the miracle of modern technology. Councilmember Selsky is present. Bob, can you hear me?
Hi, Ken, Jim, and greetings, everyone.
Very good. All right. And the minutes will reflect your presence telephonically. Thank you very much. And it's so great to hear that your son is back home. I just saw that today. Yeah? Bob, his son just came home from service in Afghanistan, so we're, we're very relieved to hear that and thank you for letting us know about that. So, all right, well, let's move on to Item B, Certificate of Reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Our Parks Committee Chair, Councilmember Honda, Chair Honda.
At the April 21 meeting, the council reappointed Mark Copeng as a voting member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'd like to invite Commissioner Copeng to please come forward to the podium now and I will read the certificate of appointment and then present it. Certificate of Appointment. In accordance with Ordinance 00-366, the City of Federal Way Mayor and City Council certifies Mark Copeng is hereby reappointed to serve as a voting member of the Federal Way Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire April 30 of 2018, signed by our mayor and the seven council members.
It is an honor to serve the City of Federal Way and I've had a lot of fun serving in the Parks Commission. So, I think one of the things that it's really important for the citizens of Federal Way to know is that there are plenty of opportunities to serve the city and the only barrier really is your willingness to do it. So, I hope that I can be an example, that you can just get engaged and really enjoy the process. So, anyway, thank you for the honor of being able to serve, continue to serve as a member of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And as Chair of that commission, we really, not only as a member but as Chair of that commission, we appreciate all your work. Thank you very much. And thank goodness you reapplied. All right. So, let's now move on to my emerging issues and report. We had a Neighborhood Connection meeting last week. No, excuse me, it was the April 23rd. It was a good meeting at Adelaide. We had a good turnout. Somewhere around eighty people, eighty-five people. Good conversation about, it was a follow-up to the meeting that we had there last year. These are essentially town hall meetings, but the difference is we bring all the city, the major city staff and directors, have a chance for the Deputy Mayor to say a few words, for, you know, Rick Perez, our traffic engineer, all the department directors, got a slideshow and a presentation from our chief. It's a great opportunity to really reach out and I think one of the things we promised when we started doing these Neighborhood Connections is we were going to come back and show the difference in not only, you know, crime statistics but also what's happening in regard to public works projects. So, I think it's important as policy folks and folks that work for you that when we say we're going to do something, we actually do it and we actually follow it up. And our next meeting is next Thursday, May 14th, at Olympic View Elementary. So, that's Olympic View Elementary School, May 14th. That's next Thursday at 6:00 PM. And so, same kind of thing, really detailed analysis on crime that's occurring in that particular neighborhood and in any other, you know, public works projects that are occurring and some tips. Council, any comments about the Neighborhood Connection meeting from last week? Councilmember DeGlo.
Yeah, I thought it was very well attended for the, for the second one. I thought everybody was engaged and it was, it was very nice listening to them, hearing the changes that have been made since the, you know, and the response to the issues that they brought up. So, to show that the city is listening to people and that it's worthwhile to go to these meetings because we hear from them and we learn a lot. And if there's some things we're not doing, we try to fix it as quickly as possible. So, it's a, it's a good time. It's a good time to meet people and the cookies are great, too.
Too good. Council, any other, well, and actually, Councilmember Moore reminded us that that's where he went to elementary school at Adelaide. So, we started the meeting with, so, Councilmember Moore?
Seeing how you're, hearing that you're saying that and thank you for recognizing that. And I do want to say, pass on my thanks to the mayor for letting me add that to the, to the audience. But I also had the chance to come to the Neighborhood Connection meeting. It's always good to get away from City Hall and actually get into the neighborhoods and really have that chance to listen to what people are saying and listening to the results that we're driving back to that neighborhood. That's, so it's good. And, and Mayor, again, thanks for letting me share that little fact with the audience at that time.
Very good. Thank you very much. The picture before it changes right there on the screen is me introducing the council. And we've got Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Maloney, Councilmember Asefa Dawson, and Deputy Mayor Burbidge. This was actually, we had the State of the County address at the Federal Way Community Center. And, boy, they did a really good job with the, with the dais and the, and the whole room. They packed the room. We had, I don't know, how many people do you think were there?
Ten.
Yeah, it was, it was a full room.
Standing room only.
Yeah, standing room only. And it was, it's a real privilege to have our county executive come all the way down to Federal Way. I'd like to thank the staff over at the community center and all of the department directors. It was, it was very nice. Our own King County Councilman Pete Von Reichbauer was there and it was a good opportunity to showcase and highlight and brag a little bit about what we're doing in Federal Way. So, that kind of captures a really neat moment. The county executive has been very helpful in regard to especially his assistance in making sure that we did not lose our public health facility where thirteen thousand seven hundred single moms and their children depend on those services. So, and that you were obviously very important partners in that. So, this was actually, see the sign right there? We, we actually contemplated, as you know, we have the new sign on 320th with, that we worked with the service groups in our city and, and the new beautiful reader board. And we were trying to figure out what we do with this sign, which is right next to it and, or close to it. And instead of knocking it down, we decided to put some paint on it, refurbish it. We're going to put some flowers in there. And it's all about creating an entry point into our community where people, you know, have a little bit of a, not a little bit, but a very positive image of Federal Way. When I got off the freeway on Friday coming, coming home from my meeting, which I'll talk about in just a moment, not only did I see this just freshly painted, but when I turned the corner, I saw our new sign talking about all the events we have. And then I saw that Marwan and his crew had put up the smaller US flags, the three US flags to complement our big flag. So, you know, I think it's very, this is essentially our front door and our walk, our entryway into our community. And we're really sprucing it up. So, I'd like to thank the council for your support in this effort. And we're just going to shine in this place up like a new penny. So, it's, it's fun to see that and I wanted everybody to see that. Let's see. We've got Touch a Truck coming up. Let's see. John Hutton, why don't you tell us about Touch a Truck on May 16th?
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and members of the City Council, I just want to make another invite out to Touch a Truck. It's a great event. We had over twelve hundred people there last year at the very first time. This year, it'll be even better. It'll be at Town Square Park this year. We are incredibly excited about the new program additions in addition to bringing back some of last year's favorites. Our Federal Way Police Department will be there doing some demonstrations with their bomb squad and the bomb truck. Federal Way, or excuse me, South King Fire and Rescue will be there with the Jaws of Life. We have melded fitness and anger management into a new program over there where you can take out your frustrations on a car with a sledgehammer for just five bucks a whack. So, we're really excited about that. We have a couple of nice food trucks. Stax Burgers will be there as well as Crispy Crapery. So, we are really excited about this event growing and getting better and better and becoming a yearly event. So, love to see you all there. It'll be a lot of fun. Like to invite all the citizens to come out. It's a great event for kids of all ages, boys and girls. It is a lot of fun. We had a lot of council there last year and the mayor was there with his little boy and everybody had a great time. It's a noisy environment because every kid likes to honk those big horns on the big rig. So, it's a lot of fun. We'd love to see you out there. Please come on out. That is a busy day because we also have Blue Poppy Day on that day and a Blue Star Memorial dedication on that same day. So, lots of good stuff to do in Federal Way and we'd love to see you at all of those events.
Councilmember Maloney, then Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I was just going to mention that is a busy day. There are a lot of things going on. And in addition to what you mentioned, there's also the Federal Way Coalition Against Trafficking 5K. And I think there are a couple other things as well. So, it's going to, people are going to be busy, but hopefully they will just segue one into another. But thank you.
That's our hope. That's why we're going to feed them every, every style.
Great. Thank you.
There's also the Marine Hill Swim Team Parade, of which I'll be a part and probably some of you will be riding in cars, too. That's Saturday morning also.
Thank you. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. The Touch a Truck, there is a quiet half hour. So, if, if you were there last year, it was very noisy. And if you have a child who's sensitive to noise or, you know, that's just is really hard for your child, I believe it's, what, twelve to twelve thirty or twelve thirty to one?
Yes, we have a sensory half hour for children from eleven thirty to twelve. No horns allowed during that half hour.
But that would be really important for your child to be able to see the vehicles and play with them and not be impacted by the very loud beeps that are coming from every single vehicle.
That's a really good point. Good to know. Okay, so, so get there early.
Get there early.
Yeah.
Eat a lot. Take out your aggressions on a car that we're going to rip apart with the jaws of life. It's a great day. A lot of fun.
Sounds like a plan. All right. All right. Thank you, John. And then the next thing, we've got Parks Appreciation Day.
Yes, I'd like to just highlight for you, and a lot of the council members were out there at the different events along with the mayor and some city employees came out as well. But I want to report that we had tremendous volunteerism at four different sites in addition to the fence that the mayor had mentioned earlier. And I believe some other folks will be coming up to talk about that, so I won't try to steal any thunder there. But we had sixty-eight people at Adelaide performing a hundred and sixty-nine hours of work. We had sixty-five people at Celebration Park performing a hundred and eighty-seven hours of work. We had twenty-eight people at Lakota doing sixty-six and a half hours worth of work. And at West Hailibos Park, the wetland, which had been damaged severely in the windstorm of November 11th and has reopened as of May 1st, we had sixty people in a hundred and forty point five hours. That's a grand total of two hundred and twenty-one people in this community that came out to beautify the parks, worked really hard, mostly hand tools, wheelbarrows, shovels. They worked really, really hard and did a great job. Our Parks Commission just did a fantastic job. We had Parks Commissioners at each site leading those, greeting, meeting, helping, directing, just did a great job and delivering lunch to those folks. We had a hot dog lunch provided for all those volunteers. We just had tremendous participation. And without the efforts of those volunteers and the Parks Commission, we just couldn't get things done the way we can get them done. It is amazing what can happen when you throw five hundred and sixty-three hours of man-hours at, at projects. A lot gets done. In addition to that, two days later, Davida Corporation came out to Dumas Bay with a hundred volunteers and worked for over six hours. That's six hundred hours were performed of work on the Dumas Bay grounds. And it is just shining like a new penny out there. It's beautiful. And in this weather that we've been having, it's, it's just looking fantastic. So, I'd like to thank everybody who helped out on that. Really showed a great spirit of why we all love to live in Federal Way. People come out and they will get behind a great project. And just can't say thank you enough and look forward to next Earth Day. And, and every day in between, we do volunteer projects throughout the year. That's the most high-profile one, but we just got tremendous support. So, I just wanted to say thank you and thank you to all of you that came. And thanks to everybody in the, in the audience that was there and helped out.
Right. Thank you very much, John. Council, any, okay. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it. All right. We've got Farmer's Market opening this Saturday and we've got a board member on, from the Farmer's Market who happens to be up on the dais. So, Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So, the Farmer's Market opens Saturday. It runs through end of October, as we all know. And the Farmer's Market really is a place where our citizens come on Saturdays to meet and greet each other and sit down and have coffee and mini donuts and whatever other food is being offered that day. So, it's a, it's a very important piece of Federal Way. But Saturday, we have an opening program and all four of our high school bands will be there playing. We did have a, the police band was going to come and play, but I understand the drummer is injured. So, we're looking for another band to entertain us in the afternoon. But our council members and the mayor will be there to open the Farmer's Market up around, I think it's ten o'clock or so. As with any Farmer's Market, it gets better as a season. The farming season gets better. So, don't come Saturday expecting all of your favorite fruits, fruits and vegetables because they have to grow. But we do have a lot of things going on. It's a great place. And it is something that takes a year. You know, planning has been going on for months and months. And we're looking forward to seeing everyone there on Saturday.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Tourism Promotion Area Bill. We had, I don't know if our IT people can hear me in the control room, but we actually, there we go. That's the, that is the view from the governor's conference room. And Deputy Mayor Burbidge, you did so much work on the Tourism Promotion Area Bill. Would you like to talk about this achievement and what this picture represents?
Sure. This was a bill that was very important for the City of Federal Way. There had been legislation passed enabling cities to form associations that would provide additional revenue for tourism promotion. However, in King County, the legislation, the original legislation required cities to join together with an adjacent or another city. And what we found in Federal Way was that there was no neighboring city that was really available or interested in working directly with the city on this. So, we worked for our own bill this, this session to allow us to move forward with this kind of a program independently as a city. And we were able to get the legislation passed. It's been signed by the governor, so we're very pleased. And it's going to allow for up to $400,000 a year in additional revenue, which can be used to market our wonderful community and to provide the kind of funding that will enable the city to achieve additional, additional work in this important area for the city. Tourism is a very important industry for the City of Federal Way. We have a very robust hotel industry in our city, fortunately, and so it will be very well used. So, thank you very much. And I appreciate the work that was done by And I appreciate the work that was done by our legislators. We had excellent support from all of our 30th District legislators. And our Representative Kochmar was one of the sponsors. Representative Gregory was very helpful, as was Senator Malosha. And we also had special help from our hoteliers, in particular from Ryan Miller from the Hampton Inn in Federal Way.
And that's what the picture shows right there. We've got Martin Durkin on the far left, who is one of our lobbyists. His father was one of the legends of the Washington State Senate, and I believe the Senate Office Building is named after his father. And then Representative Carol Gregory, myself, Representative Linda Kochmar, the young woman, I'll tell you a fun story about that in just a moment. Then Ryan Miller, Senator Fane, our deputy mayor, Councilmember Kelly Maloney, Senator Malosha, and our very own Martin Moore. The young woman in between, just a fun little story. The young woman in between Representative Kochmar and Ryan Miller is actually from, is an exchange student from Chile. And several of the lobbyists wanted her, she was only in Washington State for just a few weeks, and they wanted her to have an opportunity to meet the governor and be in on this. So her name is Sophie, and she's from Chile. So that was kind of a fun, fun little thing where she got to meet the governor and be part of our group. So if you're wondering who that is, yeah, it was a fun little, fun little exchange. Okay, so it was great. And that's going to represent about $400,000 a year to the City of Federal Way. So it's going to be a very, a very beneficial program for us. So thank you. Council, any other comment? Thank you very much.
I just want to thank the deputy mayor for all the work that she put in on this. She went to Olympian many times and spoke on the city's behalf, and I think without her leadership, this may not have happened. In addition to, of course, the legislators, but thank you very much.
Well, and this was the first of two meetings I had with the governor last week. He was very gracious to an extended invitation for me to come up to his Seattle office on Friday. And myself and my chief of staff, Brian Wilson, met with he and his staff to talk about, the governor is very interested about trying to help Federal Way find a buyer or purchaser for the warehouser property. And so we gave him our packet and showed him our conditions and considerations report that our economic development director had compiled and a number of other issues, and talked to him about the status of our efforts with Heartland. And so it was a good opportunity for us to sit down and talk about the challenges and the opportunities that a purchaser of that property and the impact it'll have on our region. So that was the meeting I had on Friday afternoon up in Seattle. So let's paint Federal Way. We've seen some pictures. We've got our economic development, excuse me, our community development director, Michael Morales, to start the report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and members of the council. Michael Morales, Community Development Director. I'm here this evening to just give you a brief introduction for the people who just have carried out a fabulous event here in Federal Way. And I think I've, you know, in conversations with each of you, and sometimes up here, I've discussed how impressed I have been and continue to be by Federal Way's not only amenities, but just the real sense of community that's here and the real effort and commitment to continue to improve the community. I think especially in terms of how people come together to get things done. I personally, you know, didn't see that coming, moving over to this area, and it's been very, very refreshing to see that. And, you know, when you can connect people and resources to get things done for the betterment of all, that's really just an ideal place to call home. And we have a staff member in community development, John Fairbanks, who's a code compliance officer with us, who has just been chipping away and chipping away and being very tenacious in bringing together people and resources to address this issue in this area of the city that we've had numerous complaints upon, and we really just can't seem to keep on top of, and we can't do one, you know, consistent job on it that's going to be of equality and hopefully will last, and mobilize the volunteers to do so and the donations it takes to carry something out like that. And so John has brought so many people and resources together to carry out this event, with over 100 volunteers that day. And really, it's just very impressive from all walks of life how we had folks contributing to this event. And so I personally want to thank John for his extra effort, but also introduce him to you here this evening so that he can talk a little more about the event and acknowledge some of the partners that we had in carrying this out. So without any further ado, John Fairbanks, Code Compliance Officer.
Thank you, Michael. Evening, John.
Good evening.
So I'm going to have some pictures rolled through here while I speak. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage and council. So I'm John Fairbanks, Code Compliance Officer with the city. And some time ago, the mayor came to me and was discussing this fence on 21st Avenue Southwest. And so we put together this fence painting project, and I thought, okay, we're going to go paint this fence. And then I realized it was 2,100 feet of fence. So I put a call out to start getting some volunteers together, and I was just amazed at how many volunteers stepped forward. We had, like I say, over 100 volunteers that were not only from Federal Way but neighboring cities that came and joined us. We had Sergeant Kalkstein, who is here with us tonight. He had the young men and women that are in the delayed enlistment program that are waiting to go to boot camp. They were there, as well as some active duty members. We had a large group from Integrity Life Church, and Pastor Joe Baumann brought just, these kids were just amazing. They were the life of the party. They came out, and some of them had never picked up a paintbrush, and they just had a blast that day, as you can see from some of these pictures. We had members of the Korean American Parents Association came out, as well as Federal Way Youth Ecology. And I would like to thank Holly Shilly, who works for the city. She helped make that contact. We, Councilmember Susan Honda had the key clubbers out and joining us. And we had members of the South King Fire and the Federal Way Police Department come out. And Mayor Farrell was there, Councilmember Kelly Maloney and Martin Moore as well, picked up some paintbrushes and spent part of their Saturday with us. And the great thing about this was the donations we received. We had Skeets Painting down in Kent that donated all the paint for this project, so that was free of charge to the city. And then we had World Vision donated over 200 paintbrushes and rollers and gloves. Advancing Leadership came forward with brushes and rollers and just all the supplies. Everything was donated to the city, so it was just fantastic. We also had Costa Vida from the Commons Mall. They brought out a sweet pork taco buffet line. And the key to keeping volunteers and getting them to return is to feed them well. We had, we also had snack bars from Kind Snack Bars. And then we had the Federal Way Police Officers Guild bring us cases of water and ice. So it was just, this project could have not gone any better. And it's just amazing how the community came together and just took this 2,100 feet of fence, in just over four hours, they had that whole fence painted. And it was just amazing. If you haven't had an opportunity to go down that road and see, it just, it feels like a small community when you're driving down that road. Fence is painted, the grass is trimmed, and it's just fantastic. And I love that I was able to be a part of that and bring together all these volunteers. So I could talk forever, but I won't. So thank you very much. All right, thank you, John. Great job. I clearly, I clearly picked the right person to head this project up. Thank you very much for doing that. We had Bruce Honda, our unofficial photographer for the City of Federal Way. We had, sorry to interrupt. We had Dwight and Shelley Pauls. They aren't even, they don't even live in Federal Way, and they just do so many great things for our city. And Shelley is an amazing photographer, as well as Bruce Honda. And we have our sergeant here. Sergeant Kalkstein, if you could raise your hand. Sergeant, would you like to say anything? Not to put you on the spot. Come on up. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me, by the way. I got the invite from Mr. Fairbanks. When I first came to this city, I PCSed here about a year ago. When I first came, my first agenda was to meet the mayor, because when you go into someone else's house, you meet dad. That's the very first thing you do. And my recruiters, they really haven't had a part in the city. You know, we have an office here, we go to the schools, we talk to parents, but they don't have a feel for what goes on in the city. So the first thing I asked the mayor was, you know, what can we do to help the city? Because your taxpayer dollars pay our salary. I'm just a civil servant. Whereas I went and I deployed and I fought overseas, I don't do that anymore, but I work here. So the first thing that he said was, I got this project. I'll put you on it. So we followed it up, and, you know, over time, it started to develop. And this is the first of many projects that we want to be a part of. Our future soldiers are in high school, college, graduates, some are married, some are single. They come from all different walks of life. But something that I was taught early on in Mississippi was that you always give to others. So whereas some of these individuals, they weren't raised the same as I was, it's something that I want to instill at an early age, because as their career progresses in the military, they'll see the bigger picture of things, that I'm just a small little pebble in this big world, and I'm just trying to make it work. So while I'm here, I'm the Center Commander of the Army Recruiting Section here. While I'm here, anything that the city council needs, any help, just call.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, this idea had been percolating for some time, but, and I think maybe I've told Councilmember Honda about this, but it was just one, it was just like the straw that, or the one final piece of inertia that took us was a suggestion where Councilmember Honda had literally been driving by there and actually mentioned this fence. And that's what finally got me off the, you know, because we've been trying to work out the logistics and the cost of the paint and all of this. And so it was that final comment that I thought, okay, we finally got to start this, and so thank you very much for that. And you just happened to be back in Virginia that week, right?
I know, and my husband was keeping me updated, so, and sending me pictures. I'm sorry I missed it, but I saw lots of pictures of my key clubbers, so how exciting.
You were there in spirit. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to pass on my thanks to John. I've gotten to know John since 2013, and, you know, he is just one of many talented people in our community. And the amount of effort that you put into this is just impeccable, and I really appreciate that. And really, and I'm glad you touched up on this, John, but I also want to thank another incredible individual. And of course, as a city, you know, not a day goes by that I realize how lucky we are to have so many incredible people in our community. But Shelley, you know, Shelley Pauls is an amazing individual. She is a person who just always makes you feel warm and just happy, and I just really appreciate that about her. And so, and really, I was able to stay there for a couple of hours, and, you know, I have to do a shout-out to my girlfriend, Sarah. She actually came out and painted the fence with me, and I was really grateful. And as I was painting, Mr. Mayor, I thought to myself that this is a day that we can be really proud, and to proud to call this place our home, Federal Way. You know, and I know that in Auburn, next door to us, we've often seen clean the streets or sweep the streets or something like that. I don't know the exact name of it. And I remember every time I've seen that, I've always thought to myself how I wish Federal Way had something like that. And that was a great, that was a great project. So John, thank you for the efforts you put. Thank you to the donors, and thank you for Councilmember Honda, I guess, for, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, for sharing the idea.
Yep. All right. Yeah, kind of the suggestion that got the idea off the, finally got it off the, got me moving. So sometimes that's all we need, is someone to suggest a project. All right, so anything? Well, good, good. There's a lot to do. All right, and, you know, I want, before we move on to the most important part of the evening, which is citizen comment, I want to say something about the last council meeting. And I, you know, as, we all know that we had a spirited debate here, but I, you know, I'm raising a little boy and who's seven years old, and I talk to him all the time, you know, teaching him how to be, you know, a man and growing up. And I tell him all the time that life is a learning process, and it's a continually learning process. The last council meeting, I learned something very important, and that's twofold. Number one, I think it's easy when we get in, when we get on the dais to become involved in a debate. And, but as mayor, I think the first lesson is I want to communicate this to all the colleagues, that as mayor, my job is not to engage in the debate, it's to help lead, help facilitate the discussion and the debate. And in the future, where I find it irresistible to weigh in on a matter of debate and express my opinion to one degree or another, I will, I pledge you, I'll hand the gavel over to the deputy mayor. I think that's a more appropriate venue, and I think that's a, meeting management, I think, is very important. The second item is, you know, being a trial litigator for 19 years, I think I popped into prosecutorial mode, and I think while passionate, may perhaps a little too passionate. And I think that, you know, we've got a great council that engages each other very respectfully, and respect is the cornerstone of all good relationships. And so I pledge to you that, to the degree that when we disagree, we need to do it agreeably. And so for that, you have my, you have my word. So moving on, now the most important part of the evening. We've got Dr. Art McIrvin, and I'll hand this to the city clerk to read. And then after that, we've got Jim Stiles, and then Norma Blanchard, and Richard Conat, and then Patricia Conat.
This is an email received from Dr. Art McIrvin. I will not be able to make it to tonight's city council meeting. This may be of some benefit for a reason not to put pot shops and grow operations in Federal Way. It's a report from the National Institutes of Health on the subject. You may also want to look up the report from about eight or nine months ago that shows that use among youth is drastically higher in Washington since legalization. It may also be noted that a small strip mall on Pack Highway burned down from an, I assume, illegal grow operation. Dr. Art McIrvin, O.D. And the report he's referencing is the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services National Institute of Health report.
All right. Jim Stiles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jim Stiles. I've watched with interest as a new and much more expansive vision of Federal Way, advanced by Mayor Farrell, has been unfolding in our city. However, disturbing events during the council meeting of two weeks ago have called the mayor's vision into question, and I'm concerned. Mayor Farrell and some members of the council are using the 53% yes vote for I-502 as justification for their claim that the majority of us in Federal Way want pot-related businesses to be located in our town. But I, I'm a bit confused. Although I'm a supporter of plans for the new Performing Arts and Conference Center, where was this concern for the will of the people when spending for the PAC was approved? The sudden and impassioned concern for the current will of the majority exhibited loudly and forcefully by our mayor during the most recent council meeting seems convenient. We have had both a mayor and a city council concerned with cooperatively developing their vision for a better Federal Way, rather than with playing politics or by trying to score points at the expense of the others. Many of us would like the council, and especially the mayor, to maintain the sense of decorum, refraining from the partisanship, bickering and badgering that was so disappointingly displayed at the recent council meeting. The residents of Federal Way and your colleagues deserve no less. The development of the Federal Way Community Center and soon-to-be constructed PAC are evidence of a real commitment to creating the sort of Federal Way of which we could be proud. We ought to make Federal Way attractive to visitors and residents, both current and future, by bringing to Federal Way those businesses and other institutions that will enhance the livability, not ones that will increase problems in our town. The image of Federal Way that I have does not include marijuana-related businesses or the potential problems that such businesses may bring. We still have problems of marijuana status in federal law. It remains illegal. As a result, banks and other financial institutions are barred from doing business with marijuana-related enterprises. We have the problem of businesses that deal with large amounts of cash needing to keep that cash somewhere. Wherever it can be kept, it can be stolen. Robbery, though, isn't the only potential crime problem. Marijuana-related business owners and employees have been assaulted and worse. Cash businesses will attract criminals. We need more, we will need more police resources to handle the threat. Such crimes are occurring elsewhere, and there's no reason, if the council does not act to prevent it, that where they can't occur in Federal Way. I-502 and the relevant RCWs do not mandate that every community... I-502 and the relevant RCWs do not mandate that every community allow the presence of marijuana-related businesses. Consumers of marijuana-related products will have plenty of access to such products in nearby King and Pierce counties, where they will not be close to Federal Way schools and Federal Way's children. Other cities have decided that such businesses have no place in their community. Federal Way ought to make the same choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Norma Blanchard.
I'm Norma Blanchard, longtime resident of Federal Way. And, of course, I'm talking about term limits. And before, they had a retreat, January 31st, 2015, but before that meeting, I think it was the first one in January, one of the council members says that didn't have time to discuss this. Well, then I look back in my papers, I've been working on it since 2010. Don't have time, didn't have time to discuss it? I don't understand that. And at the retreat, there was no discussion, just, there was two people giving their opinion. First was Councilmember Number Five gave a long speech. Then Councilmember Number Two tried to open up a discussion by asking a question, and the mayor came in and shut her down. And then it went back to Councilmember Number Five, who finished his speech. Then the mayor came in giving his speech, and at the end, and he said, "People need to vote on it." I agree, people do need to vote on it. But possibly, the mayor does not know, or understand, or does not want to understand, is the council can put it on the ballot for a vote. For the people to get it on the vote, it would take an initiative with the need of approximately 6,000 signatures. Can you imagine how much walking it would take? Because we don't have that many volunteers. A lot of walking and a lot of talking. I know I was one that was there. Excuse me, got the elected mayor, so we could elect our mayor instead of having him point it. Now, I understand why the retreat was never, is never videotaped. Nothing solid to refer back to. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
Oh, another time, when Jim gave, the mayor gave his speech, at the end of his speech, I listened very, very carefully to see if he said, "The jury is back, and the action will be to vote on it." You know, you have to separate being a prosecutor with the mayor. It's two different deals. You're crossing your lines there, Jim. Be careful.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Richard Connet.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, deputy mayor and council members. I'm going to comment on the issue of the marijuana shops. And I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I understand that amongst other things, opinions were expressed that marijuana is relatively benign, to a certain degrees or other. And I think, I'm going to make a case that this requires some serious rethinking, and this is in light of the most latest current research on the adverse effects of marijuana, especially upon the youth, of which the general public cannot be expected to be informed, and certainly, the people at the meeting probably were not. And again, this is research published subsequent to the legalization of marijuana in Washington State. Obviously, time does not allow me to go into much detail, but I'm just going to highlight a few things. And to that end, I prepared a packet for each of you with copies, and these are abstracts from peer-reviewed journals, studies, published on PubMed, which is the National Library of Medicine's database. And just to highlight a few things, in constraints of time, potential for adverse effects on cardiovascular health, marijuana risk and the risk of lung cancer, 40-year cohort study. I'll move as quickly as I can. Cardiovascular effects of cannabis on heartbeat variability, means it can cause, you know, irregular heartbeat and well-being in young men. This is in young people. Psychological well-being was significantly lower in cannabis users. Effects of marijuana use on impulsivity and hostility in daily life. These are just samples, folks. Adverse health effects of chronic cannabis use. Again, this is 2014 research. Potential for stroke in young people, brain health effects. And as concerning as these are, perhaps the most concerning of all are troublesome, and I've made a copy of this for you, is a report by the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics. And I'll just summarize. For adolescents, marijuana can impair memory, concentration, interfere with learning, link to lower odds of completing high school, or obtaining college degree. Washington State, we've got a problem with that already. It can alter motor control, coordination, and judgment, so on and so forth, which may contribute to unintentional deaths and injuries. Again, but I would say, in light of this, I think we need to look at the legalization of marijuana as an experiment. It's a public health experiment with an unknown outcome. And do we really want to experiment in Federal Way with the well-being of our families and our children by facilitating the use of marijuana through marijuana shops? And so, I would ask you to maintain the ban, just flat-out maintain the ban, please. And as far as the advisory vote, as your elected officials, I believe it's your role to guide the public, who cannot be expected to be informed about this, and not the other way around. And so, I would ask you not to put it to an advisory vote. This is too important. And I'm out of time, but in closing, I would just offer a plea. Folks, don't let politics trump the right thing to do here, for the well-being of our kids, and for the image of Federal Way, and let's do what's really right for Federal Way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Patricia Connet. And then Janie Estrada.
Thank you. I'll kind of be highlighting, underlining what Richard has said. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, and Deputy Mayor Burbridge and City Council members. At the last council meeting, you voted to put the question of having marijuana shops in Federal Way to an advisory vote of the people, as we've heard tonight. The founding fathers thoroughly understood the fatal weaknesses of pure democracy and warned against the populace attempting to manage all public business. James Madison said, "Refine and enlarge the public views by passing them through the medium of a chosen body of citizens, whose wisdom may best discern the true interests of their country." We have a democratic republic here, and you are the chosen body. It is the job of the council to establish law and policy, as it says on your website, and to do what is right for the people of Federal Way. We elected you to deal with the city matters that cannot be dealt with well by the people. The issue of whether or not to open marijuana shops in our community clearly falls under this jurisdiction. The dangers of recreational drugs are well-known. We all know people who have been negatively impacted, yet widespread misinformation about marijuana abounds. The National Institute for Drug Abuse reports that use among youth is dramatically higher in Washington since the legalization of marijuana. Teachers, policemen, and others in our schools are already reporting the effects. Making recreational marijuana more accessible will similarly increase its use. We will see many preventable problems escalate in our community if we legitimize it by opening the shops. This is risky business. We need to pay attention to accurate information and study it carefully. Recent studies show a tripling of marijuana-related traffic deaths, an increase in serious brain damage, and psychosis, neurosis, and anxieties of all kinds. Repeated marijuana use creates an inability to concentrate and function normally, shortens the lifespan, creates birth defects, and often creates an inability to accomplish one's goals. We need to study these long-term effects, as well as the effects of its recent legalization, without adding yet another facet to the equation. It is best, it is at best hasty to bring this to a vote, when so much accurate information is yet needed. As an expert in inpatient adolescent treatment says, "I have seen firsthand the destruction this drug causes." If you add up all the reasons for adolescents going to treatment, including alcohol, they would not equal the amount of adolescents going to treatment for just one drug alone, marijuana. There is now a push in our community to manufacture and distribute marijuana, should we really be that easily influenced? Let our revenue-making ventures be guided by the principle of the good of the entire community, not on the false promise of money. The issue has recently become a highly political one, rather than one simply involving the welfare of our community. It is not a matter of opinion, I'm almost done, or preference or politics. It is a matter of what truly is right to do. The third of cities, one-third of the cities in Washington State have banned marijuana shops from their jurisdictions in order to protect their communities. We here in Federal Way should follow suit. As a mother, grandmother, teacher, and citizen of Federal Way, I ask you to vote the safest, healthiest, and most life-giving option for our citizens. As our city council and mayor, I ask you to ban the sales of marijuana from the city, which is in your power to do. Please reconsider the advisory vote, and vote once again to ban marijuana sales in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. And now, Janie Estrada.
My name is Jani Estrada, and I'm a doctor of chiropractic. I'm here tonight to share with you some facts and personal experiences about marijuana use, and to implore you not to put the pot shop business on the ballot as an advisory vote, and not to have marijuana sales in this beautiful city of Federal Way. In my clinical work, I have been seeing the use of marijuana disrupt adrenal function, and is associated with increased amounts of hypoglycemia. The munchies effect of smoking cannabis is a sign of this adrenal disruption. Many studies are coming out now about the effect of marijuana on the brain, especially the developing brain of our children. While THC and other chemicals in marijuana can reduce pain and nausea, they do not, they do this by destroying the very sensitive brain cells related to perception and coordination. The drug is highly toxic and literally destroys the brain. Given the importance of brain health for concentration, meditation, and spiritual growth, marijuana use threatens the integrity of all aspects of our health and spiritual well-being. The symptoms of THC brain damage include distorted perception, impaired coordination, difficulty in thinking, and problem-solving, and memory difficulty. These are short-term side effects. But, long-term marijuana use has been shown to increase activity of stress response and to alter the activity of dopamine-containing nerve cells. In short, this diminishes motivation and perseverance in work, relationships, and on the spiritual path. While some people mistakenly believe this is to be a more evolved state of non-attachment or emptiness, it is in reality a numbness to life that inhibits our full expression. Cannabis smoke contains 70% more carcinogenic hydrocarbons than tobacco smoke, and regular use has been shown to dysregulate the growth of epithelial cells in the lungs. Studies are ongoing, and more data is coming out on the toxicity of marijuana smoke. Marijuana legalization proponents deny health harms, just like the tobacco industry did. There are even, remember those very, very old cigarette commercials that featured doctors endorsing smoking and saying, "Was for your health." Well, denying harm is a tactic used by tobacco companies for 50 years to keep people smoking and buying cigarettes. The same thing is happening here. Sooner or later, marijuana legalization proponents will have to take responsibility for grossly misleading, just a little bit more, the public about the health harms of pot. To persuade people to legalize, they have to perpetuate the myth that marijuana is harmless. It is not harmless, and I sadly learned, when I partook of marijuana, I experienced the effects, no motivation, complacency, lack of sharpness in thinking, and all that I mentioned at the beginning of my statement. To this day, my lungs are extremely sensitive. Dope makes you a dope. But it's funny, when you are a user, you can't see or feel yourself degrading. Everything seems fine. Marijuana is addictive. I, could I just finish?
Of course.
Thank you. Marijuana is addictive. I was addicted and in the grips of marijuana with a kind of mechanical habit. I was a spiritual seeker and wanted to stop. Finally, after many prayers, I experienced a spiritual conversion and was cut free. I'd be happy to share the spiritual tools that worked for me with anyone here, or anyone you may know that would like to stop their marijuana use. Many people are waking up to the fact that they have been harmed by marijuana, and they are angry with the society that has told them it is harmless. One last point. Statistics show marijuana use is up in our middle schoolers since marijuana was legalized in this state. Besides the physical harm of the drug to developing brains, the lack of drive and motivation, which I detailed earlier from chronic marijuana use, can cause our children to miss their cycles as they prepare themselves to contribute their missions to society, the normal cycles of marriage, family, career. I was well into my 40s when I embarked on my chiropractic degree. That's what I mean by missing your cycles. Let's put our children before money and profit, and stop this expensive advisory vote to a people who have been sold the myth of harmlessness. Do you think it would be an accurate, thoughtful vote of an informed populace? No. That's how it unfortunately became legalized, and this experiment in retail marijuana is making merchandise of our children. They copy what the adults do. Medical marijuana has some benefits, but at what cost? We are adjured not to do evil, that good may come. I counsel you to do your own investigations and assert the local control you still have to stop any selling of marijuana and the use that perpetuates within the beautiful city of Federal Way. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, that's the last one I've got, so if you want to come up to the podium, we're ready for you. I'll call you. Maybe you could just introduce yourself, please.
All right. My name is Debbie Saban. I've lived in the community for 30 years. I have five children I've raised here, four Eagle Scouts. My daughter was Federal Way's junior miss, so I've met a lot of you through that. And I'm throwing my thing I wrote down out of the window. My first job is a mother. My second job has been a teacher. I've been a substitute teacher now in this district for several years. The last two years, I have noticed a big change in our students. I see what she's talking about. I see the numbness. I see the apathy. And yesterday in the classroom, I won't tell you which school I was at, you could smell the marijuana down the hall. You could smell it in our classroom. And I see the effect it has on our students. And I want you to know that 53% of our state of Washington may have voted to have marijuana legal, but that does not mean 50%, 53% of the city of Federal Way wants it in their city. And I agree, you have a great responsibility, and I have a lot of admiration for all of you, and many of you I know, various, to various degrees, but I think you have a responsibility to protect our city and our children. And I think that it's amazing that we have this opportunity at a local level to still keep it out of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any other public comments? All right. Great job today. Thank you very much for everybody's comments. You really set forth the issues before us, so we appreciate that. You did so very civilly. Thank you. All right. Now, moving on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, and before we move on to the consent agenda, does any council member have any comment or about the issue? I know we've, I do, I step into that with a trepidation, but is there any follow-up issue? Councilwoman Maloney, is there anything you'd like to say?
I, I'm not sure.
You know, it's such a, we've got folks here, and I, you know, it's a little, it's a little unstructured, and, but, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know, I do appreciate the comments, and, you know, it is hard being up here, trying to wrestle with this very controversial issue, and I think that all of us are trying to do the right thing. So, I just truly appreciate your heartfelt words, and for me personally, from everyone I've heard from over the course of this being an issue for our city, I'm really taking it to heart and really thinking about it, so I appreciate that. Yes.
Excuse me, pardon your patience, you'd like us to know.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just, thank you, Richard. Thank you very much. Council, any other comments? Anything you'd like to say about the issue? Because we, we've got folks here, and they're passionate about it. A council member-
No, I just want to thank Councilmember Maloney for her statement. I think she speaks for all of us. I mean, we're really, this is a very, very sensitive issue, and I think we're all taking it extremely seriously.
That's right. Thank you very much. Well said. Okay. All right, let's go ahead now. Now, the consent agenda. These items have already gone through committee. They can be passed all at once, or a council member can pull a particular item. I'll go ahead and read the items, and then I'll ask the deputy mayor if there's a motion. Item 5A. Minutes of the April 21st, 2015, regular and special meeting minutes. Item B, the monthly financial report for March of 2015. Item C, vouchers, March 2015. Item D, resolution. Safekeeping agreement, U.S. Bank. Item E, resolution. Cooperative purchasing with U.S. General Services Administration- General Services Administration, GSA. Item F, resolution. Amend fund balance reserve policy. Item G, parks equipment to be purchased with replacement reserves. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
I do. I move approval of items A through G on the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would a council member want to pull any of the items for separate consideration? All right. Is there any, Councilmember Moore, is there any discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is a question really for John Hutton, if that's okay? And that's, you know, I, I'm curious to find, in, in our federal committee meeting, we looked at item E, the U.S. General Service Administration becoming a part of that. And obviously, that opens up the door to really being efficient and effective with our dollars by finding products that are cheaper, I guess. So that being said, with item G, do we have an answer in terms of, are those items, if we were able to find a better price than those?
Yes, and just to clarify, we do use several different purchasing co-ops like GSA. And, and we were, the original purchase was through one of those co-ops rather than buying differently. So, we have looked at GSA, and first blush is, it looks like they lean heavy toward police equipment and IT equipment. We're not quite done with the research, but it does not appear that GSA will be necessarily the perfect fit for these type of purchases for park maintenance-type equipment. But we will continue that search until we exhaust that completely, and we are getting an excellent price at the, on the other buying co-op that we're a part of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council, any other discussion on these items? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous that, now we're on to ordinances. We heard you, Bob. Thank you. Uh, ordinances, first reading. On A, Council Bill 679, amending Federal Way Revised Code 1.15060, appeal to hearing examiner. Staff presentation by our city attorney, Amy Jo Pierceall.
Just very briefly, you have before you a proposed ordinance that will amend FWRC 1.15.060. This is basically a housekeeping measure. Back in 2014, you passed a new fee resolution that set forth appeal fees, and this code section was not caught. It's inconsistent with the fee resolution, and this ordinance will change that, so it just refers to the fee resolution, so whenever the fee resolution is amended in the future, this code section will follow it.
Okay. Any, council, any questions? All right. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 679, amending Federal Way Revised Code 1.15.060, appeal to the hearing examiner. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the fee associated with appeals of an order to cease activity or a notice and order amending Federal Way Revised Code 1.15.060.
All right. Councilmember Duca, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the May 19th council meeting for enactment.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. Now, moving on to Council Bill 680, Lake Haven Utility District Franchise Extension. Staff presentation by Ms. Pierceall.
You have before you a proposed ordinance that would extend the current Lake Haven franchise till the end of the year. The current franchise will expire on May 24th of this year. We've just begun negotiations with Lake Haven and require additional time for a more long-term franchise extension. So, again, this ordinance would just extend the current franchise to the end of the year with all of the same terms to allow us that time to complete negotiations.
All right. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 680, Lake Haven Utility District Franchise Extension. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, granting Lake Haven Utility District a municipal corporation an extension to a non-exclusive franchise to occupy the rights of Way in the city of Federal Way, Washington, through the franchise area for the purpose of operating a water and sewer system within and through the city of Federal Way.
All right. Councilmember Duca, do you have a motion?
I, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the May 19th council meeting for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes. Now, we're on to second reading and enactment. Item C, Council Bill Number 674, vacate a portion of South 336th Street. City clerk, would you please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 674, vacate a portion of South 336th Street. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, relating to vacating a portion of South 336th Street located on the south side of 13th Avenue South, west of 13th Avenue South, adjacent to Lot 1BLA 201409 159000251 at Federal Way.
All right. Councilmember Selsky, would you like to make a motion?
I would, Mayor Farrell. I move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. Item D, Council Bill 675, proposed code amendment related to the regulation of adult family homes under Federal Way Revised Code 19.105.080. Uh, city clerk, would you please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 675, proposed code amendment related to the regulation of adult family homes under Federal Way Revised Code 19.105.080. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the regulation of adult family homes, amending Federal Way Revised Code 19.105.080.
All right. Councilmember Selsky.
I move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item E, Council Bill 676, Christian Faith Center Franchise Extension. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 676, Christian Faith Center Franchise Extension. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, extending the term of the franchise agreement established in ordinance 05489, and granting Christian Faith Center non-exclusive rights to occupy the rights of Way of the city of Federal Way within the specified franchise area for purposes of construction, maintaining, repairing, operating, and removing cable, voice, data, mechanical, and fire alarm conduits within and through certain rights of Way and streets within the city of Federal Way.
All right. Councilmember Selsky.
Once again, I move to approve the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. The matter passes unanimously. And finally, item F, Council Bill 677, Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club Franchise Extension. Would the city clerk please read the title?
Council Bill 677, Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club Franchise Extension. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, extending the term of the franchise agreement established in ordinance 05512, and granting Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club non-exclusive rights to occupy the rights of Way of the city of Federal Way within the specified franchise area for purposes of maintaining, repairing, and operating an irrigation system within and through the city of Federal Way, Washington.
All right. Councilmember Selsky.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
All right. All the way from across the country. All right. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. That, that does it. The matter passes unanimously. Now, on to council reports. Uh, Councilmember Esipadossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended several events here in Federal Way, the community event at Adelaide, and I went to the Korean School fundraising event, which was really fun, and Chief shared his dessert with us, so thank you. And then, at the state of the county council, one thing that really struck me, he emphasized and talked about the economic disparity in our, in our county and how a lot of people are moving to South King County because it's affordable, and that's information we all are aware of, and how the rich are getting richer, the poor are getting poorer, and then the middle, um, people are pretty much vanishing. But he also talked about minority kids, especially where the high schools have become conduit or from school to prison for a lot of minorities. And I've heard this over and over, and as a mother of three African-American kids, it really, it always hits home, because one of the statistics I had heard was, one in every three black young men gets incarcerated, and now we're talking about marijuana also. And it's, it almost seems to me like I have to line up my three kids and wonder which one of the three would end up in, in prison. And it's really heartbreaking, and I would like to put a disclaimer, my kids are all doing fine, but still, it's just, it's really difficult to hear that kind of statistics. And I think, as a community, we need to embrace our youth, especially kids who are not only marginalized, but who don't have the resources to combat those kinds of issues. And so, I'm glad he talked about it. I'm glad he's trying to address it as an issue that is really overwhelming, and so, and it's also my hope that Federal Way will really be a part of finding a solution for this issue, because it impacts our future. And I want to be a solution. I want to be a part of that process of supporting our youth as they become adults and contributing community members. And so, that was my huge takeaway from that event, so, thank you very much.
Councilmember Maloney.
That's very well said. Yeah, I agree. I agree with you. Um, this morning, I attended the Boys and Girls Club breakfast, and it was an interesting presentation. I really enjoyed that. But it was, it was all about raising funds for the, I believe it was the soccer field for the Boys and Girls Club, which is, you know, when you get, talking about youth, when you get youth out and you keep them busy, that's always a good thing. It keeps them out of trouble. So, that was a good event. I did attend, as it was mentioned, I attended the, the community beautification event and helped paint a little bit, and no one else thinks this is funny but me, but I told John that he, he should get the Tom Sawyer Award, because he got 100 people out there to paint that fence. That was his job.
Right.
So, I think it's funny. Anyway, um, so I also attended the state of the county address with King County Executive Dow Constantine, and I had the same takeaway. You know, that was really interesting to me. And in addition to, you know, he's looking at root causes to solve the problem, which we've heard from, from Dan Satterberg and others. So, this is really becoming something in, at least in King County, that is being looked at from infancy on up, and I think that's really valuable. So, that's good. And, uh, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Well, it's good to be back in Federal Way. East Coast is great, but Federal Way's better. So, before I left, I had the opportunity to attend the Hala Bus District Dinner, which is a Boy Scout event, and it was a volunteer recognition for several troops and packs and Cub Masters and Scout Masters and leaders. And, you know, my kids were very involved in scouting, as well, our whole family was. You know, talking about getting youth out and getting kids involved, it, I would encourage and, and thank those who are involved in scouting, because it really does do great things for, for boys and for families, and also for girls and Girl Scouts. I was a Girl Scout leader, too. So, thank you to the Hala Bus District for inviting me to come and talk to you. I also attended the Federal Way National Little League Jamboree, along with the mayor and Councilmember Moore, and there were over 500 children that day marching in their, their new uniforms and getting ready to play for the season, which was a lot of fun to watch. So, the next Parks Recreation Human Service and Public Safety Committee meeting is next Tuesday at 5 o'clock. We have a full agenda, and public comment is welcome. The agenda is posted online, so if you're, you'd like to come and talk to us, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Selsky, can you hear me?
I, I sure can, Mayor Farrell, and I want to thank you for acknowledging my son, who just returned successfully from the tour in Afghanistan. This was, uh, his third deployment to the Middle East, and the first two being in Iraq in just less than eight years. So, all the parents out there who've had sons and daughters deployed in harm's way know my wife and my sense of relief when he stepped back on American soil. And I was so happy to be able to welcome him home here in person like I've done with his prior two deployments, and I can say that my prayers are with all service members who are out there in harm's way in different places around the world. And you know what? It was really neat to see the Sergeant First Class, and you know what? I must say, I, I'm not sure I got, uh, heard everything he said, but it was really neat to see him volunteering for John Faribank's project there. You know, service people do such great things in, in, in many different facets of our society, and it's really neat to see that, that recruiting group, and I guess they were a recruiting group, involved in the city in the way they are. I'm really proud of that and happy that, that, that John was able to get them to volunteer. So, along those lines, I'm honored to be involved in the dedication and unveiling of the Blue Star Marker on Saturday, May 16th, at 1:00 p.m. at Celebration Park. This marker is generously being donated by the Marine Hills Garden Club, and it honors all Armed Forces members who have served. So, I encourage everyone who can to come out to this wonderful dedication to our Armed Forces, and this, again, occurs Saturday, May 16th, at 1:00 p.m. at Celebration Park. It's going to be a real neat ceremony with a lot of activities. And lastly, I want to thank Councilmember Maloney for expertly chairing the Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting yesterday and taking care of the many agenda items during that meeting. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. A lot of things are happening now, and as, as the weather gets warmer, certainly there's going to be a lot more activities that are happening in the next several months. So, my activities, I also had the chance to attend the state of the county address, and, and if I understand it correctly, and Mr. Mayor, you may want to help me with this, and that's, that's the first time in the history of Federal Way that we've had a King County executive come down to Federal Way and give a state of the county address, and that is remarkable. It, it's something to be said about that, and I think that says to our region and to our state that Federal Way is on the move, and we are making incredible things happen in our community. And it's just great to see state leaders and, and regional leaders recognize that in our community center. So, that was great, and also, that's where King County Executive Dow Constantine introduced the Best Starts Initiative for kids. And if I understand it correctly, and this is something I'm going to be looking at and studying over the next several months, but that's going to really heavily impact our public health facilities right here in Federal Way, if I'm understanding that correctly. And again, there's a lot of things I need to study in that initiative, but that is something I'm looking at very seriously, because we know the sacrifices that all parties had to play in to keep our facility open here. So, that's something that, that I, I took away, in addition to what my colleagues have stated earlier. The Neighborhood Connection Meeting, like I said earlier, it's always good to get away from city hall and into the neighborhoods and just listen and interact with people, and so, I appreciated that. Paint the Fence, just an incredible event, and just, I really appreciate everybody that came together as one community to, to make something happen that continues to build the quality of life for Federal Way and its residents. I also, as was stated earlier, I had the opportunity to attend, go back to Olympia and the legislature and attend the bill signing for the tourism bill. And I also want to recognize, of course, there's a lot of people that have been recognized, but I do want to recognize Ryan. Ryan is a member that has worked hard from the beginning, if I understand it correctly, and that dedication is just great. So, it was good to be back in Olympia. It's certainly a place I miss, as I told one of my colleagues. And Sound Transit, I mean, as I'm listening to the, to the report that Sound Transit gave, I, I cannot help but to think how, how different this is going to look in Federal Way. I mean, having big boulders in Federal Way is going to really change the, how the city's going to look. And, and that being said, I, I've got to stress to the people that are listening and to the people that are in the audience and anybody, that it is so important that we hear your feedback and, and what, what you have to say in terms of what routes you'd like to see in Federal Way. That's something that I'm trying to listen to, so I can, you know, put that into our conversations that we have in our dais. And, and possible suggestion is, maybe we add something about that in our reader board on the welcome sign. reader board, uh, on the welcome sign, it's just a, perhaps an idea, I don't know how that goes with the policies, or not, but that's just something I wanted to share. Farmer's Market is opening up this Saturday, I'm absolutely excited, uh, I'm, uh, ready to be there, uh, also wanted to take the time to thank our firefighters, uh, they've worked really hard over the last, uh, several months, uh, on the Prop One Initiative, and certainly for the record, I'm not talking about campaigns, but just want to recognize, uh, their efforts, and, and the work that they put into our community, uh, and so, just wanted to say thank you, uh, and also, last but not least, wanted to recognize, uh, and show my appreciation for Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer, certainly a man who has been nothing but dedicated, uh, to our community, he was recently recognized, uh, by the Chamber of Commerce in, in the City of Auburn, uh, for, uh, an award that is called the Bill Kyle Service Award, uh, I'd love to tell you what that is, but it is an award that recognizes someone's leadership and service to that community, and so, uh, I just wanted to show my appreciation, uh, to our council member, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Duclair.
Last but not least, um, I too attended the Adelaide meeting, um, it's almost, it was a year from last year that we were there, and the great thing about the meeting was, we were able to stand, our staff were able to stand up there and talk about the things that people had raised last year, and how we had looked, how they had looked into it, and they had corrected things that needed correcting, and they were able to report back that it wasn't just a meeting, and they didn't, we didn't just listen and walk out, but we actually took the information, did something, and gave them a report back, so that they knew our staff was working for them, and of course, they brought up new things that we can start working on this year, which we will, and it was well attended, what'd you say, about eighty people?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was figuring when I was looking around the room, I thought it was very well attended, and, uh, and, and it went ver- and went along well. Um, I also had the opportunity to go to the Korean, the Federal Way Korean School fundraiser last, uh, a week ago, Sunday, and, um, it, it was a wonderful experience, uh, it, the, the costumes, they, they put on a, a, a great feed, and they, by, this time, they let you know which ones were, were really, really spicy, and which ones that I could eat, and, but they had an entertainment, and they had children from every grade in the school, I mean, little tykes all the way up to teenagers, and they wore the native costumes of their, of the country, and they came out to the music, and danced to the music, and sang the native songs in the native language. Luckily, I was sitting next to a Korean fellow who could tell me what was being said, um, now I know what it's like when you're, you're in a, you're from a foreign country and you're here, and you don't speak the language, what it's like to sit in the audience and not know what's going on, but you can appreciate the art, artistry, and the song and dance, and that's really all you need, I was, uh, a Councilmember of City, Asaph Dawson, and Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Burbidge was with me too at the table, it was just, just a great, great, a great evening, and I think they raised a great deal of money that night too, I forget what the number was, and I don't want to misquote it, but I was surprised at how much money they raised. Councilmember Honda's whispering over there. Um, the, uh, tomorrow, uh, this Saturday, I will be in the Marine Hills Swim Parade, um, at about nine o'clock in the morning, and then from there, I will go over to the Farmer's Market and probably have my lunch, and I think that's everything I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duclair, before we turn over to the Deputy Mayor, we have a very important message from, uh, Councilmember Honda.
Um, my grandson Owen is watching me on TV, he's visiting from Alexandria, Virginia, he is, he is, his dad's in the Army, and they're going to Thailand for fifteen months, and they're leaving pretty soon, so, he's watching me, and I want to say goodnight, I'm coming home, um, I only get to see him for a couple more days before I won't be able to see him for a long time, so, love you Owen, goodnight, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Oh, I can't top that.
Well done.
Okay, the, um, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has its next monthly meeting, uh, next Wednesday at eight o'clock in the morning, and, uh, there is a subcommittee of this group, uh, the Tourism Enhancement Grant Committee, uh, had their meeting last week, um, I want to also underscore the importance of these Sound Transit hearings, I hope folks will be able to attend the, the information part and the hearing part of the meeting at the Community Center tomorrow, beginning at four, and also, if not then, at Highline College at, at the same time, or to express your, your opinions and thoughts online, uh, or in some other format, you can certainly send them a, a letter in the mail, uh, such an important issue for all of us, and, excuse me, I want to also mention that, um, we just received an email later today that, um, King County Metro has, uh, been able to improve some of their routes, uh, and including, uh, routes to Seattle from Federal Way, both routes one seventy-nine and one ninety will be improved in frequency, I believe, and we'll be learning more about this as time goes on, but something to look forward to, and then there are a number of other routes, but those are the two that directly affect our city, and routes coming and, and going from here. Um, I also want to mention that, um, and this is related to the, um, message from our County Executive, and income inequities, and also the importance of supporting our youth, there's a fundraising breakfast for communities and schools a week from Friday, so that's Friday, May fifteenth, at seven o'clock in the morning at Warehouser, and this is an opportunity to spend some time at that facility too, um, maybe one of the last public opportunities. Um, at any rate, this is, this will be an opportunity to, to help support this communities and schools effort that's so important, it provides mentorship and other kinds of support for our students and schools who are in, in need of that support. Um, Center Stage Theater at the Knudsen Family Theater at Dumas Bay Center has a really wonderful production, um, going on right now, it's called For All That, and it's a musical that focuses on World War I and its impact on, uh, some folks, especially some Scottish folks, and it's really wonderfully written and wonderfully, uh, produced, and I would encourage you to look into that if it appeals to you, it continues for three more weekends, Friday evenings, Saturday evenings, and for the next week, it's also su- Sunday afternoon, the following two weeks, they add a, a Saturday afternoon performance as well, and you can get information on the Center Stage website. Uh, and additionally, we have upcoming on May fifteenth, Friday, May fifteenth, and Sunday, May seventeenth, our Federal Way Corral has two wonderful concerts coming up at St. Luke's Church, uh, the Friday, May fifteenth performance is seven thirty in the evening, and on Sunday, May seventeenth, the performance is at four P M. in the afternoon. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, uh, council, with that, I believe, uh, our business is done, we are adjourned, thank you everybody for coming. Exactly.